I would like to call to order the meeting of the City of Columbia Planning Commission for January 12th, 2021. I'd like to ask Deanne to do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Deanne?
Lord, we ask your blessing on our community and on our world during this time. Be with our leaders as they guide us and as they make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Give them the wisdom and knowledge they need during this time. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, will you call the roll?
Ted?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. You've all received copies of the October 13th, 2020 meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. I see there's no old business. And under new business, I would like to start out by welcoming our new member Bryce Minor to the planning commission. I think he's going to be a good addition for us and we look forward to working with Bryce. I have replaced Brian because the mayor automatically becomes a member of the planning commission. So I'm taking that role tonight. At this point, I would like to move that Ted Souter be appointed chairman of the planning commission. Do I hear a second?
Second up to that.
Okay, so the motion is made in second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask Deanne to call the roll.
Ted?
I'm staying.
Cut?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Okay, so Ted, you're now the chairman of this committee, this commission, and I turn the gavel over to you.
Well, thank you. Item B, we have a site plan review for Tom Dorn owner Regal Jewelry, 246 Park Avenue. seeks the planning commission's approval to add a new line of merchandise to his business. Guns and ammunition sales. He's going to apply for a federal firearms license.
I see Tom is with us. Maybe you give us a little input, what your plans are, what you're thinking.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My primary interest is I'm also a licensed auctioneer. The the actuality of what I want to do is to auction firearms. And to do that, I have to have a federal firearms license. So that's in due process. So actually, as far as merchandising and retailing, it'll be minimal at this point, small amount, just, you know, items that are consigned or that I purchase on my own. So actually, in reality, it's just I'm getting my federal farms license to be able to auction guns on that premise and to properly handle consignors weapons because you can't, you gotta have that federal farms license. So that's the primary reason. As far as signage, I don't think I'm gonna, I might add one sign, maybe none, because it's, I already have a sign there stating Regal Auctions.
You hear a lot about firearms over the internet and I do a little bit of that. I'm just gonna add a little bit here that anything that he sells that's out of state or anywhere, it has to be shipped to a firearms licensed dealer. It cannot be shipped to an individual. That's right. Isn't that right, Tom?
That's correct. I'm aware of that. I've been.
I'm just making the rest of the board aware.
Right. I've been in deep conversation with the ATF and they don't, there's nothing, no rock left unturned.
You're in a C4 zone and I don't see that anything in our, in our code book that says any problems with having firearms sold in C4. So I see no problem with that.
Any other comment? To approve as submitted.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in second. Deanne, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Good luck, Tom.
Thank you. Feel free to stop in if anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, we have a site plan review. Carl Langle seeks the planning commission's approval to open a bouquet and gift store on 8 South Main Street. Carl, are you here?
I'm here.
Give us a little input on what you'd like to do.
Well, we sell women's apparel, children's clothing, home decor, bath products, accessories, jewelry, handbags. And I'd like to be part of the community uptown. That's where I originally wanted to be to begin with.
Commission, have any questions?
Pardon me?
Are you leaving somewhere for this site if approved?
Well, I was leaving Firestone Farms.
Okay.
You have the name of your business?
Is Madison Corner.
Madison Corner.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Deanne, please.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Cut?
Yes.
Item D, we have a site plan review. For Flynn Auto Group represented by Jeff Stoy, seeks planning commission's approval to open an auto body repair shop at their building located at 43399 County Line Road. Jeff, you're here?
Yes, Sam Flynn and myself are here.
You want to give us a little input on?
So Flynn Auto Group has an existing warehouse that they would like to expand their body shop in. We looked at other options of taking the existing body shop, but it seems to make more sense to move to County Line Road. We're adding two to three paint booths and we're also looking at possibly adding two more sections of building off the existing for more space. We're adding a fence to have the cars behind when the tow truck drivers bring them in so not visible from the road. And we're asking for a pole sign, a sign on the front of the building and possibly a sign on the back of the building so you can see it from Route 14.
Any questions from the board?
My only question would be is since that fenced in area on the backside, Jeff, is facing a residential neighborhood potentially, are you guys going to do any type of screening if you're going to close cars in that space?
Well, that fence would be on the backside, be on the Route 14 side.
Oh, is it got, it's from the wrong way? Okay, is that, yeah, let me see here. Okay, so you're putting the building, okay, so you're putting on the, on the 14 side?
Yeah.
But still, are you guys planning to do any just minor screening on that fence itself?
Yes, we are. Oh, yeah. It'll be covered up.
That, that would be my only, that would be the only thing because every, we all know that when, when you bring bodies, a body shop, you have a lot of parts in and out and you have stuff storing outside. And our, my recommendation would just be some type of simple fabric on backing on your fencing to hide any products that you do have in there. But um.
What's the highest fence we're allowed to put in?
What?
What's the highest fence we're allowed to put in?
Depends if you're holding deer in it. I don't know.
Oh. Well, that's an old one, Tucker. I think Attorney Hudson even enjoyed that one.
I do not know the height in the fence. Does anybody know that?
I'm thinking it's going to be six feet, but.
We'd like to go higher.
You know, from Route 14, you know, you're gonna be, you're gonna be able to see right into it, but you know, if you're down on the ground, we can, we can double check the height to see if it can be higher.
Okay. Are you able to establish what signs will be allowed?
Yeah, you can call tomorrow if you'd like to August in Hill Law.
Okay.
On the signs that are, they're pretty standard.
Okay, good.
Planning commission usually doesn't deal with that.
Okay.
If you have a plan for the sewer.
So we've been in conversations with Lance and some other people that are on here and yes, our proposal is to continue that sewer project. Lance, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yes, it's, over the years, people have been wanting to extend that sewer from basically around Jamestown Trace. And the city's had preliminary engineering for that, either to go up County Line Road or hug near 14. The latest project or proposition was, perspective was staying close to 14 and that project would, you know, have to develop with, you know, some type of cost sharing and, and we'll have to get that back together. And I believe some of the property owners are on this call and will probably be meeting. You know, the city would be involved in that and basically would connect to that sewer. And it would go down to the back wind jammer lift station, which was designed to handle that in the first place. So that's going to be a long process to get that done. You know, a lot of participation and involvement from property owners, but it's, it sounds like there's a, I believe the majority of the property owners are willing to, to, to at least talk about it. We'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks.
Do we want to possibly approve this with stipulation of the sewer or? I mean, I, I think it could probably go ahead i- if we know the sewer is going to happen and you could operate with maybe a portage on until, because you'll, you'll probably come to fruition quicker than what the sewer will, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we gotta order some equipment and stuff. There's some pits and stuff that gotta be built. There's stuff to do, but that was kind of the thinking was a portage on or something. We might even keep the customers at the other facility and just mobilize the units as needed to, until the sewer is completely finished.
Anything else from the board?
How are you operating with sewers out there right now? Do you have no employees on site? So it's just a warehouse with no restrooms?
It's full of cars and RVs and boats and.
Okay.
Storage.
There's no active employees. The question is, do you involve the health department, Ted, with something like this? Because of sewers rather than from Columbia. I mean, do you deal with the county health department? Or you just allow them to put a portage on in? Because if the sewer, if the problem, if the sewer doesn't move forward, then the facility has portages.
Yeah, I, I think the portages are definitely not a long-term solution for that.
Okay. So would we recommend more than a holding tank so that to pump out a holding tank until the sewers are installed?
No, I, I would, I mean, I, I would think that, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, sewer is going to be very important to this and I don't believe, I mean, I think you'd have to get the health department involved if you were gonna do some type of holding tank, but I definitely would not advise it and I would have to actually have to look at the legalities of doing that.
Okay. So how do we approve it without having a direction on the sewer?
Well, I think the sewer project, I mean, everybody on this call is going to know if it's going forward here in about, I don't know, I would say in the next three, four weeks.
Okay.
I guess my answer, Tucker, to your question is, everybody that's involved in this sewer project is on this line. If this doesn't go through, then the sewer line dies.
Okay, so that's, so then we just, so then we just approve it pending formalization of the sewer line?
Ted, if you're here with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I don't want to hold up your construction, but.
But we're not going to construct if we're not going to have a sewer. That's what.
All right, yeah, right. I get it. I don't blame you.
So yeah, so I'll, I'll motion to approve based on approval. I'll, I'll motion to approve as submitted based on approval of this, of the sewer line.
It's second.
Any other conversation? Dan?
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
staying.
Okay. Item A, site plan review for Caitlin and Javier Ibarra seeks the planning commission's approval to open a new restaurant. El Paso Mexican Grill at 121 Town Center Avenue. Are you with us this evening?
I am. Hi, how is everyone?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Very well.
I hope I didn't butcher your last name too bad.
No, it's Ibarra, yeah. Javier Ibarra, that's my husband's name, that's how you pronounce it. Um, yeah, so we are the owners of El Paso Mexican Grill. That's right behind Pizza Hut in that plaza. And we, for quite a while, have been looking for a way to expand our business. We actually, a few years ago, talked about maybe having a patio and knocking out that one wall and all kinds of different ideas and for all sorts of reasons, it just didn't work out, every idea that we had. And so then we found out that there was a spot available in Firestone Plaza. And we decided just to kind of go with it and we're really hoping it's, sounds and looks like a great opportunity and so we're, we're very excited about it. It's a little scary, but it's, it's fun too at the same time.
Any questions from the board?
That's next to the, the Brew Lounge, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay.
When would you plan on making the move?
Well, that would probably depend on the transfer of the liquor license with recently the Trex that got signed and approved. I'd call the liquor department and because of everything going on, they are behind. And so it kind of depends on that. As soon as I asked for a timeline of when they could possibly approve that transfer and they said they didn't know. So we would love to be open before Cinco de Mayo, the 5th of May. But I don't know if that, if that'll happen, but, but we hope so.
And you're also changing the name, I read.
Yes.
You're leaving the franchise that you're with?
Yes, so we are wanting to break away from the El Passos, like the ones that they have in Triplo and Calcutta, because every time that they change their menu or they do something, it's expected of us to change at the place behind Pizza Hut. And we want to be able to have a different menu, have a more authentic menu and be able to do our own thing, have our own experience whenever people are there.
Okay. Caitlin?
Go ahead, Scott.
Are you, you okay in leaving your lease over to Plaza?
Um, so me and my husband have been talking about that. I believe we actually still have a few more years, so we need to talk with the owner of the Plaza. Because we may just be doing a sort of like taco burrito type thing for a while if they can't find anyone to fill in that space and just kind of see how that goes. So we're not too sure if we're going to keep that particular location or if they can find someone to take over our lease, then just leave it completely. So that's kind of open to.
So if you, if you can't get immediate release from your, from your lease, that's not going to hinder your desire to move forward at Firestone?
No, we, we definitely want to continue to move forward because we think it'll be worth it in the end to be over there.
I, I can actually, I agree with you. I think I'm a bit excited to have a Mexican restaurant outside of town.
That's good to hear.
I'd echo those comments.
A quick question, Caitlin. Since you'd be breaking away from the El Paso franchise, are they, do they have any interest in remaining in that current location as a franchise or would they be vacating also with you leaving the Plaza?
That is a good question. That kind of is within the same vein of us trying to determine if we are going to keep that business up and running. I can't really give you an answer, honestly, an answer on that. I think we want to see if El Paso can survive there still and then if not, then we will not, we'll concentrate more on Mexico City on, on the newer restaurant, so.
But you're going to take the liquor license off the Firestone Farms?
Correct.
So there won't be a liquor license at the current location?
Correct. We are going to be transferring that one to the one in, in the Firestone Plaza.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second that.
Deanne, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Item F, we have a site plan review for Ralph Bender seeks the planning commission's approval to open a used auto dealership at the former Cashland Building, 144 North Main Street. Bender, are you available?
I'm here.
Okay. Give us a little input on what you'd like to do.
I'm looking at putting a car dealership in at the old, it looks like an old Lawson's building. I have not.
Correct, that's what it was.
I have not purchased the, that shows my age. I have not. I retired from Ohio Cat. I was there for 23 years as a heavy equipment salesman. And I've been out for a year. I was in the car business for 15 years before I got in with Cat. And I decided that I was going to get back into the car business from my retirement. I have not purchased the building yet. I'm working with the people from Canton that own the building. And when I went, I'm going through my dealership approval right now. And it said that zoning had to approve a car lot. You know, it had to be zoned for the car lot. So I came to zoning. It's Zone C2. I guess I needed to be C4 or the people that own the building needed to be C4. And I wasn't going to buy the building before I knew that I, you know, it could be changed to C4. You know, I'm not interested at all if it can't be changed. Like I said, I'm not the owner. I'm in the process of negotiating with them right now. And I'm curious to see if you guys would be willing to change it to C4 instead of C2, which it is right now.
Any comment from the board?
Well, what are the zonings around it? What are, what do we have sitting around it? Is it, are everything that's around it C2 or is it C4?
Yeah.
What's Cornerstone Motors there?
I think it is.
You can see Cornerstone Motors from there. Heck, I think C Tucker Cope's right there, isn't he?
Yeah, not for too much longer.
Yeah. I know you're dead.
Yeah, I know. I, I've only got 11 months of lease. I got a new shop to get built, so. I'll be off Main Street for.
I guess the big, the big.
Now you.
Is if it's not able to be used as a car dealership, I'm not going to buy it or lease it or, you know.
Do you know you could also get conditional use approval to use it as an auto sales location?
No, I, I just went to zoning and I asked what it was and they told me about the meeting on the 12th and I came to the Zoom meeting. I don't, I'm, I'm not really savvy on zoning and what you can do partially or can't do or I'm not, I'm not sure.
Because that, that building is between residential properties.
Right.
So.
A foot off the back of the building and you're into the, into the residential property. It's all frontage.
Right, so to me, I'd be more willing to, to do as a C2 with unconditional use permit rather than convert it over to a C4 because it's between residential, basically on all three sides for them.
Got you.
At least.
Two sides.
We don't want a spot zone either. You know, we don't want to zone one, one lot, one individual lot, C4. You know.
But if you're on C2, you can do like repair garages, automotive laundries, I mean, gasoline service stations, I mean, there's a lot of.
Ralph, I'll, I'll be straight up with you. I'm planning on having, you know, obviously I was in the heavy equipment business for a while, skid steers, mini excavators, trailers, trucks. You know, it's going to be more than just, just cars.
Ralph. That's bones. Do you, do you plan on, um, do you plan on prepping your vehicles offsite and bringing them, taking them there for sale? Or do you have, you want to do some service?
I was going to, I was going to cut the front of the building out because the double doors that are to the north side of the building is fine for offices to the right of that. Um, I went through the building with the owners and it's, there's no basement. It's all concrete. Um, I was going to cut the brick out in the front and add a double bay garage door. So I can at least have detail. I was going to use local guys for mechanics. I don't, I don't want mechanics. I don't want to lift. The, the ceilings aren't tall enough for lift.
Right.
Um, I was going to sub everything, all that out, the tires and, you know, alignments and brakes and, you know, the safety check the cars. Uh, but I was going to have detail there.
Okay.
The, the biggest thing I see with that property, I think, isn't it the curb cut pretty much all the way across the front of the property?
I think they have, uh, the molded curbs.
They actually have individual because it's just, I think it's.
Well, there's an entrance in and entrance out on the, on the south side of the building, I think. Because they had a ramp that you could pull a semi up to. And off the north side of the building, you have a pretty wide entrance to get in and out of the lot. And I guess I have two things that I'm thinking about. My daughter's a hairdresser. And if I don't get the car lot put in there, I was thinking about putting in a hair salon for her. She, she, she cuts hair right now in North Lima Hair Studio. Dickie's, Dickie's Plaza over there, North Lima. And I was thinking about, um, opening up her hair salon. If I don't do the car lot there, I can do it somewhere else. It does work for a hair salon C two, correct?
Yeah.
I, yeah.
So. I think so.
Yeah. Cause I, Michael's a good friend of mine, Tom, and I was actually good when a Firestone, when he first opened it. And then circumstances happened where she got married and then had babies and now they're grown up and she, she wants to go into business for herself. So I may, I may do that for her there. I'm not, you know, if the car lot thing didn't work there, it's still a great spot for a hair salon.
This may be a question for August or Lance. I'm not sure. But if you are going to sell additional equipment there other than automobiles, would that still fit on C two conditional?
And there wouldn't be heavy equipment sitting there would be.
Says auto sales.
Yeah, it's, it's auto sales, but I, I would have, I'm sure I'd have a skid steer there. I'm sure I'd have a mini excavator there. I may have a boat there, you know, I, I buy and sell a lot of things. I own an airplane that's for sale right now. Couldn't park the airplane there, obviously, but I mean, I, I buy and sell a lot of different items, but I am getting a dealer's license and it covers all this, all the aspects of everything that I'm going to sell. You know, anything with a title, basically.
Okay.
Is covered under the auto dealership license. Anything with a U C C.
The more you talk.
Say it again.
The more you talk, the more I'm seeing, uh, trying to figure out how it would fit into C two.
I got it.
Regulations, even if you, even under conditional, uh.
But it says, under C two, it says repair garages and specialty establishments such as motor body, fender, radiator, motor tune-up, muffler shops and auto sales and service. That's under C two.
I can keep the heavy equipment at my farm over on Washingtonville Road. That's no big deal. I don't have to have many excavators and skid steers sitting there. You know, I can keep those pieces at my farm. It's no big deal.
Yeah.
I would, I would keep it automobiles.
I'm for the, the building being used again on Main Street. I'm just not for changing its spot zoning. Because the thing is, Rob, if, if all of a sudden you want to change your mind again in three years, okay? And somebody else wants to use it something for C four that we've now zoned it over to C four. We don't like the new uses of C four. Um, we're, we're putting ourselves in a jackbox.
I got you. If the auto dealership falls under C two, I'm fine with it. If you guys are fine with it. I just don't want to make an offer on this building and not be able to use what I want to use it for.
Right.
You know.
I mean, I, we've had our shop up on Main Street and it, we, we hedge the line of C two up there.
I got you.
Um, but as long as we're good citizens or stewards of the community and citizens of the community, um, we don't get too much grief.
I got you.
But when we're out of there, they're probably, I mean, they, they don't want it, they, they're not going to let a manufacturing facility go back in there.
Got you.
But they're just happy with the, to be used and not be vacant.
Right. If you're fine with me putting cars there under C two, you know, I'll, I'll continue forward with these guys that own the building. That's, that's. You know, I'm looking at three or four.
You realize with, that's conditional. That's conditional approval. That's conditional zoning use. So we'd have to notify all the neighbors, get a letter back, hold a public hearing. There's a lot of steps when we, once we go to conditional.
But Rick, is it really conditional?
Yes, I think it is. And I think you better go through the planning, the process for a conditional zoning certificate. Otherwise I think you could have some griefs.
So what is?
My opinion.
Tucker, that's, that's conditionally permitted use, uh, you know, under B.
Okay, there it is. Yeah, you're right.
And that's repair garages and auto body and all that. That's, uh, B nine.
Yeah. Okay. That's conditionally permitted use.
Yes. And tha- and that's a separate process that, that, um, Mayor Noel pointed out.
So you can't give any guarantee that that is going to succeed because that has to come before planning commission.
Got you.
Application.
Right. I, I understand completely. The neighbors have to approve. Everybody has to approve, which I understand. Not a problem. I truly appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me, you know, join the meeting. I'm, I'm in the process of getting this dealer's license. I have all my paperwork sitting here and I have three other lots. And I know I have approval on the other ones. I wanted to be there, but that's okay. Um, I'll come back to you. Um, I'm going to speak with my daughter and her husband tomorrow. Maybe there'll be a hair salon in there. And not a car dealership.
That, that would be great.
Well, thank you for your interest.
I, I, I'm glad I moved down here. I came from Austin Town and I've been in this area for now twenty-three years on Washingtonville Road and I'm glad I moved down here.
Good.
Okay.
We'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good. Bye bye.
Item two, we have a replat. Rob Straher representing APL Properties seeks to plan commission's approval to replat lot twenty-nine into lots twenty-nine, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four and forty-five. Rob?
I know you're here.
Yeah, I'm here somewhere. Could you, do you see me?
Oh, yeah.
All right. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, Robbie.
You're on now.
Am I? Oh, there I am. All right. Sorry. Um, so what am I doing here? I'm replating Back Bay as we're starting with?
Yeah. First one's Back Bay.
First one's Back Bay.
Back Bay.
All right. Do we allow screen sharing here?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Amber Wallace.
Yeah, yeah. It'll take us a second.
All right.
You should be good to share.
Thank you. Um, do, 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 I gotta find it. Okay. All right. So, uh, this is Back Bay. Um, yeah, we'd like to, uh, I'd like to replat, uh, hopefully for the final time in Back Bay. Um, we are going to, um, put together, uh, uh, put together, uh, I, I'm hoping is a final replat on this side of the tracks. So, um, we're, we got one, two, three, four, five lots here that will be added to the Back Bay Homeowners Association. Um, and we're creating a state lot, uh, in the back here, forty-six, which is a two and a half acre parcel. And we're also creating, uh, lot twenty-nine, which is, um, or new lot twenty-nine, I should say. Which is going to be, um, we'll have more of the residences that I've been building in, in, uh, there's single family residences that we're leasing out on lot twenty-nine. So, um, so really there's three different types of home styles here. Lot twenty-nine are the residences that we're leasing. Lots forty-five, three, forty-three, forty-four, forty-two and forty are going to be in the master, uh, association back there where those are fee simple homes that people purchase. And lot forty-six is more of an estate lot in the back.
Um, what's twenty-nine again, Rob? That's that real narrow one?
The twenty-nine is the one that is a three and a half acre lot.
Oh, can I wait, is it?
Yeah, lot twenty-nine actually, how I, um, right now, lot twenty-nine owns twenty-five feet all the way around the, the existing development.
Okay, okay, that's.
Okay. That's kind of a, uh, number one, it gives everybody a little peace of mind because the tracks are back there.
Okay.
So, um, it, it, you know, they come in with a chopper, I think two years ago, and they mowed, you know, branches right off of the, the, the easement there they have along the rail line. Uh, number one, number two is, uh, um, you know, people always worried about what's going to happen back there. So I just kind of took, you know, just initially, an initial conversation was easier just keeping twenty-five feet. So, and it's a, that way when the rail line comes in and they call me, they're only calling one property owner versus calling everybody back there saying, hey, we're going to be behind your house. So it's just a little bit easier.
You get to call the other property owners then, huh?
Yeah, I, they have my office number. So Linda, Linda takes care of them. Um, but yeah, I didn't know if we needed to, to talk about anything in particular. Um, uh, the final coat of blacktop is on, uh, this, uh, half acre parcel here, which is. By chain. So I don't know where that's at right now. But. But yeah, I'd like to dedicate that street, move that street over to, uh, I'd like to move that street back into the, um, or, you know, have the city basically come out and look at it eventually. So I don't, I don't necessarily know if this replat moves, moves that property back into the city, but there'll probably be a, a transfer at some point, right Lance?
Yeah, I believe so.
And all your frontages fall within the sixty foot.
Yeah, it's actually forty foot back here, um, because it is our, our three, but yes, they do.
Okay.
I'll, I'll motion to approve as submitted unless there's any more conversation on it.
I'll make a second to that.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, Rob's there where you're at. Uh, item H, we have a replat. Rob Straher representing Lakefront Preserve and Earl Corey seeks the plan commission's approval to replat lot one into lots one, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one and fifty-two. Go ahead, Rob.
All right. I lost my Zoom meeting here. I gotta find it again. Um, I'm going to share this one real quick. Oh, could I have Amber, could I have the, uh, share screen again?
Yep, just made it.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so can you guys see it?
No, not right now.
No, not yet.
It's thinking.
Guess so. Let me try it again. Share screen. I don't like it. Too many windows that are open, maybe. I don't know. I guess stop scope, let me try, let me try to pull up an AutoCAD real quick. Yeah. So in, in Old Saybrook, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions here, but this, this is actually, I'm representing, uh, Earl Corey, uh, regarding this, um, property. So, um, Earl does own the property right now. Um, I'm in the property of, uh, or, um, under contract basically to develop this property and to purchase it. So I probably see that now in AutoCAD, I would imagine.
Yeah.
But, uh, this property here is, um, actually, how, well, I'll let me, let me just explain the whole, whole thing. So Earl Corey owns all lot one. Okay. Lot forty-eight down here, okay, is where Earl, uh, visits there every day and, uh, uh, there's a little pond there. It's called Swan Lake. Um, that's where you'll find Earl if you can't find him in his house. So he's down in here hanging out. Um, there's a little lane up in here that takes you back to this parcel. Okay? So Mark could kind of explain this a little bit, you know, li- li- in a little more detail, but really there's only one new property pin. And that's that pin right here, this twenty-five foot pin on the, on the, uh, right where my cursor's at. So that pin there is Earl's, um, uh, new pin. And he is, he is, uh, structuring this parcel so that, um, I think as, as he, you know, as he ages here and gets ready for, uh, uh, for, um, his estate to take over. This, uh, this property is, um, um, kind of protected, so to speak, from the developing side here. That's up top. So lot one is, is new lot one. Um, that's going to be fifteen acres. And then I'm also purchasing off a lot one. I'm purchasing, you can't see here because of AutoCAD settings. See if it works better here. That's the same. You, I'm purchasing new lot one, uh, I'm sorry, we're dividing lot fifty, fifty-one and fifty-two also from new lot one. So, um, fifty is sold. That's why it's replatted. Um, we need to replat that so the bank could close on a loan there. A lot fifty-one will be the detention lot and lot fifty is going to be, um, I'm sorry, fifty-two is going to be, uh, where the, the street will be built. Will be taking that out to Eureka Road. So the sanitary sewers approved for the street. Uh, water, stormwater and water, um, are both need to be, um, actually, I, I, I probably will say roadway, water and stormwater, all three need to be approved yet by the city engineers. And EPA and, um, what's the third? Ohio EPA and, uh, there's one other approval that it needs. So that's the plan anyways is to, we have, uh, two lots sold back there on lot fifty-two and we, as we're putting in the infrastructure and, uh, developing that we've been building, um, just like we did in the earlier stages of Danbury Way. We, um, did well in the past year selling, uh, we sold one, two, three, four, five, six lots on Danbury. We have two left. Um, and, uh, we, we envision this street's going to go just as fast. All, all CRA related.
Any questions from the board?
Is that, is the Danbury Way, is that a two-way street, Rob, or is that a one-way street?
Uh, it is. So Danbury Way starts down here and it is, uh, fifty foot right away.
Okay.
Um, I want to say that from back of Kerber, back of Kerber, I could pull the plans up to twenty-eight feet, I believe.
No.
And it's, uh, yeah, so it's basically a public street and it has the finish coat, uh, up to, uh, right here where the end of dedication is, but we plan on, we plan on putting a finish coat, uh, all the way to here. It's ready to go right now. So for a finish coat. So, you know, in the spring, we like to, we like to do that as we're, um, putting in the, the base coat for the remaining part of the street.
And you're tying on the, you're tying on Eureka? There's no problem with that tie-in?
No, we, we did it over here with Radcliffe Pass.
Okay.
Okay, right down through here. So, um, it is nice that Eureka's paved, not that wide, but it is, it is nice that Eureka's paved. And, uh, um, you know, the only thing that, you know, I, I will say is that if you, by zooming right here, Tucker, the one thing that bothers me about Eureka Road is because it's so narrow, it's very dangerous for a truck, uh, just a regular pickup truck to, to, to get around another pickup truck on that road. So there's a, a twenty-foot storm easement right here. Um, Eureka Road, um, um, the apex of the road, okay? Uh, running north to south actually happens at Radcliffe Pass. So what I, what I like to do is put a storm line, um, you know, because it, it can be small at that point, put a storm line instead of having a roadside ditch there, be much safer. Um, and we can mow it, maintain it, the neighbors will, will, will like it better. Um, but as, as it moves down this twenty-foot storm easement right here, I actually have a temporary pond right here. And in that temporary pond, um, the storm lines come together, and we would go obviously from whatever, an eight inch, you know, to a, whatever, to an eighteen inch at that point, it would all be engineered, but continue it, continue along the roadside ditch, but we wanna basically bury it. So, um, and create a, uh, you know, the, the, the ditch doesn't need a, the water doesn't need a ditch that's two feet deep to, to run. It could be a swale, and you can mow the grass at that point. So, to run off the road into a, a, a swale, and then, um, go to a two-by-two catch base before it crosses Danbury Way. So, that's all being designed. It's actually being designed to those, you know, to get rid of the ditch basically, and to present all of that one, one time. But I think Mark, just, you know, especially with people pulling in and out right there, it's, it's a troublesome spot. So, and initially, initially back in, when we were approving the project between two thousand and three, two thousand and six, there's a lot of stormwater issues in Jamestown Trace, and this property was held up. But one of the things that we promised was that we were going to connect Old Saybrook to Eureka Road. So that's always been the back of my mind, sitting in the, in those meetings with my father, and him saying, you know, yes, I promise to connect to Eureka Road so that, we can get, you know, emergency vehicles in and out from multiple locations and stuff. So that was a concern back then. So, this is actually per the original plan, all the way back in two thousand and six.
Okay. I, I, I have motioned to approve as submitted, I don't see any, unless there's any more discussion on it.
Your, your, your stormwater that you're talking about, what, with a filling in the ditch and putting a swell. Uh, Lance, would that, and, and have to involve our city engineers?
Yeah, Mark, um, we, we sent everything to Hausenberg, and, uh, Rob did reference that, and, uh, we wouldn't prove anything that, you know, didn't meet our standards, so, um, you know, typically, um, you know, APL or, or, you know, Rob will, will submit a plan, and, uh, we'll give them comments back, and they address them right away. So, I, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Yeah, we just, we want, we just, you know, Ted, uh, we, we just wanna set up for success for, you know, forever. So we don't wanna have a, we're not gonna put anything in that is gonna fail, number one, but number two is, obviously, it's easier to, to, to check with, uh, with the, with the city engineers and do it right the first time. So same, what, same with the water and, uh, detention, all that needs to be, you know, needs to run through, through the city engineers, so.
I was just throwing that question out there for my own information, I appreciate it, thank you.
Hey Ted, uh, Ted, I'd like to second that motion that Tucker made.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? Dan, if you would please.
Ted?
I'm staying.
Bryce?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Um, thank you all very, very much. Um, is there public comments here at the end, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item, item A, is a discussion. As of November third, twenty twenty council meeting, Councilman McBane moved to ask the planning commission to consider adding professional office space to conditional use in a zoning code. And I believe that's for R one. Back. I could be wrong there.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Is this a matter of the?
We discussed a piece of.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
I was just gonna basically say, what you would be doing is adding a provision to the conditional uses in an R one district that would allow general office space. Conditional uses, if you look at R one at present, allow for medical offices, but do not allow for general offices. This, um, so that's basically what you are looking at. What council, I believe, was looking at was a specific property, um, that this would be applicable to right now. Um, that property was located on, is located on Springfield Road. Um, and if you're as old as me, you would remember Dr. Smith and Dr. Evans' office, and that's what we're talking about. That, that is the particular building, but, um, Councilman McBane made the motion to basically send to planning commission the idea of amending the zoning code or zoning ordinances to make that, um, type of an office use permissible. Lance, Skip, did I just sum it up?
I think so.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what we talked about. Uh, it's, actually, I think it's, it's going from medical office buildings, it's going to office, law offices.
Correct.
I think that's, that's the actual plan. And the reason, the reason for the request from McBane was, um, there was a request to go to C four, I believe, or C two, C two. And the homeowners didn't like that idea, so we thought if we, if we could kinda meet in the middle, and that's what this request is for, is to meet in the middle, so that the homeowners don't have a big problem with it, and we can still get that property, uh, inhabited.
That, uh, that puts that same conditional use in every piece of R one property in the city, which is probably the majority of us sitting right here are sitting in an R one. So.
Well, we're all working from home a lot more now, too, that we've never, so, I mean, isn't everyone pretty much have a home office anymore?
Well, mine's still the kitchen table.
Yeah.
So the home occupancies in, what, R one are to be conducted only by persons residing in a dwelling unit, which is working from home. So, with their addition, would basically change in that, that it didn't have to be the dwellers of the unit.
You're basically, what you're, I, I, I think the best way to look at this is, in the R one district, one of the conditional uses is medical office. So now what you're doing is you're saying, well, we're not just gonna limit this office use as a conditionally permitted use, we're also going to include general, and that's exactly how Councilman McBane said it, was general office. And there was, there was a fair amount of discussion over what was the best way. Skip is correct, and originally, I think it was brought before council as a C four request. And that was something that your city manager and your municipal attorney probably came up with as opposed to the property owner. And the reason we thought C four is because if you look at that side of Springfield Road, from that point out, it is all C four. So, then when it got to the meeting, someone suggested C two, and then that kind of evolved into, well, why don't we look at allowing general office as a conditionally permitted use. So there's kind of the background. Anybody correct me if I, they don't remember that?
I think planning commission, I think we agreed to allow it as a, a conditional use as a, uh, I believe it was a attorney's office to cover that one single piece of property. And,
Correct.
If I remember right, the purchaser, uh, of course, he wants to buy this piece of property, and when it's his turn to sell it, he wants to make sure he can, can do so. So, he wasn't, uh, content with us, our conditional use, I guess.
Because, I, you know, and I'm not gonna speak for the property owner, he's actually on our call this evening. Um, he can speak for himself, but I suppose one of the concerns would be, Ted, you hit it, it's going to be on sale. So although this planning commission at a meeting last summer said, yeah, we'll allow it to be used for this purpose. What you have to look at, and what I would look at as a lawyer is, hmm, did you have the authority to grant that? And if you did, can another planning commission change its mind five years from now? So I think that's what brings us to the idea of, do we look at a zoning amendment, an amendment to the zoning ordinance for not just this property, but it does apply to any other property in a residential, in an R one district in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I agree to the, I, I like the amendment, because to me, if, if you have something that's for, um, healthcare, it, it's the same as an office space, almost in my opinion. And it still has to go through the SNF test, we just need to put it into it, so it can be part of it.
Right. No, I, I mean, that would be one way of looking at it. I think we all know the, the history of this building. It's interesting, because I'm not sure how it exactly was built there to begin with in a residential district, but it was. Um,
Well, it would have fit the conditional use, right?
Basically been a resident, it's been an office, medical office, its entire life.
Which one did that fit? Uh, uh, at, at its inception, it would have fit the conditional use, cause it would have been a medical office.
Correct.
But would we have allowed a conditional use to build a medical office in that position back then?
Should have been, cause it should have been in zoning code.
Somebody allowed it.
Right, somebody allowed it.
Yeah, in about nineteen, Ted, give me help here, seventy-nine or eighty?
Well, I don't know, you're probably right.
Yeah. Um, so it's been here.
Could I ask the question another way? I'd like to frame the question another way, so I can be clarified. We have a residential neighborhood somewhere, and someone wants to take his residential home and convert it into an office space or a medical space. Could that happen under this change?
When you look at a conditional use, here's one thing, besides the specifics, which by the way, a lot of the conditional use specifics are in section twelve sixty-six point one oh of the code. You also have some additional things to look at or requirements, which is, does the use fit within the general character of the neighborhood or of the area? So, you know, I think that sometimes we focus on the specifics and forget that the zoning code does have some kind of clauses or sections that allow you on planning commission to interpret. Um, and that's kind of the whole scheme of zoning, by the way, is it's not always black and white. If it was, you wouldn't do much. So you have to be able to interpret, and when you look at conditional uses, you look at the area where they are, do they fit? So, would I say that if you allow this, that that means, for example, on Terra Verde, that if somebody decides instead of a house, they wanna build an office, well, you gotta look at, does it fit? And not just the specifics of, is the frontage or the side yards, those things, but the general character of the neighborhood. Does that make sense?
That does, um, and it would be under the conditional use application. So, it would go through the public, uh, uh, opportunity for public comment, and neighbors could speak, those kinds of things.
You dealt with an issue that had some public interest last year, and that's kind of the process. Um, you know, that particular matter did not go to a vote, but that's the process for conditional zoning certificate. Just so we're clear, when I say conditional use, technically what's issued is a conditional zoning certificate. But you're right, Rick, it goes through the public hearing process, goes through notice, public hearing, and then the planning commission has a period of time to decide, and technically, it's called report to council. But report to council means you basically make a recommendation, so to speak, yea or nay, on the conditional zoning certificate.
Now, this building has all the prerequisites of what they're asking for. It's not like you would take a house somewhere, wanna make office space out of it, because number one, you have no parking.
Right.
Here you've got the parkings all set up, everything's ready to go, so, yeah, for me, there's a big difference there.
Each, each time we look at, you can look at the property itself. So you can't say, well, gee, this opens the door. Well, yeah, but you still have control.
Right, yeah.
Our question is, we just, do we wanna add this to the code, correct?
Right. Because.
I'm for adding it to the code.
Yeah, you permitted it, but I think you understand, it's really not in the code. So what's being proposed is, put it in the code, it's still a conditional use, it still has to meet all the other requirements of a conditional use.
It's just adding basically office space next to medical space in the conditional use section.
Exactly.
I- is it up to planning commission to put it in the code, or do we recommend it back to council?
Planning commission, the way this has gone is, council has basically sent it to planning commission. Planning commission will make a recommendation, um, a- and I think that's probably where the decision is coming from. Ultimately, council may get back involved, but, you know, they sent it to you to debate the, you know, pros and cons of the issue.
Okay. So then the, the conditional use is on a, uh, on an individual basis. So this particular piece of property comes up wherever, and, you know, since we're talking about that piece of property on Springfield Road, that piece of property comes up, and in the conditional uses, it says general offices. Then, that goes through with what Rick was pertaining to.
Yes, because anytime, anytime somebody wants to move a business such as El Paso Grill to Mexico City, they've gotta come to planning commission. So, you know, if the person that's interested in buying this building decides to sell it ten years from now, or whenever, whoever buys it. ten years from now or whenever, whoever buys it is going to have to come so come back to planning commission for change of use, even if it's the same use, they're still going to have to come because they're setting up a new business.
Okay. So then it, so if this was added to R one, then it would be a conditional use to R one.
Yes. Yep.
And I believe we have a motion. Talk, you made a motion, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Anybody want to second that motion? I guess that motion fails for lack of second.
If, was the motion made to approve or was the motion made to send to council?
I believe it was made to approve.
Okay. I would make a motion to send to council for their ultimate decision.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to discuss this a little bit more. I mean, the section that we're adding is we already have in a conditional use permit that we can have a medical office. Okay, the only thing we're adding to the wording in the conditional use permit is to have an office. So for some reason, somebody at one time said that an office is absolutely not a medical office, we may think it's okay. In in a conditional use area. Now, I think we need to give ourselves the oppo- the opportunity to look at that individually and say if that makes sense or not um, by adding it to the section of code, because it doesn't automatically approve it. In my opinion, and like we've done in the past, if someone brought this medical facility to me in a residential and an R one area, absolutely not. Okay, we don't have enough R one areas in the city, within the city limits, and they need to be used accordingly. Uh, I think this was a little bit of short sighted by somebody a long time ago, whatever that's water under the bridge. Um, but now our code is to allow the community to flourish. And I think if this building is used as a lawyer's office versus a doctor's office, uh, I actually think you'd actually have less foot traffic on a lawyer's office than you would have on a doctor's office or a medical office. So I would think that would fit better for um, next to a residential neighborhood. And I I think we're short sighted if we don't try to at least modify the uh, conditional use permit to make it a little bit broader. So that that's why I initially motioned to uh, add it to the our code sections.
We know if this isn't approved, that that building is going to sit vacant. So now you've got another vacant building sitting there.
Hey guys, just real quick, I I'm just kind of looking at the code and and Mark, I don't know if you want to look at it. It looks like the the amendment process starts at twelve sixty two fourteen.
Yes, initiation starts at twelve sixty two twelve, twelve sixty two fourteen is referral pros the met proposed amendment to the planning commission. So planning commission considers the text of any proposed amendment, together with any supporting documents forming a part of or referred to in such proposed amendment. Which amendment is certified by the clerk of council to the commission? You then have thirty days for consideration and recommendation back to council. So you are making a recommendation back to council. Considering that I believe council's intent was that this was a formal referral of a proposed amendment. Dan, Skip, Ted, Rick, Lance, anybody? Um, if that's not what you remember, you know, the the language of what came up for discussion tonight seems to be exactly what was said at council. So
That's what I remember too. It was the recommendation for.
You guys basically motioned this as a formal amendment, correct?
I I think that, yeah, it was, my understanding was we were referring it back to the planning commission for the language. And then it would come back to us for final approval. Another public hearing and all of that as well.
This is what, this is what council thought would be a good uh, compromise. And they're asking, asking planning commission, does this make sense to you? Is this, does this work? Which we thought it did at the time, but we needed to, we actually needed to go back to planning commission and get that looked at.
Right. Skip, skip to answer you.
So in case anybody is looking at the code, since we all have phones and we all have laptops and we can do that. If you look at twelve sixty two fourteen, I will caution you, we are not amending the map. If you amend the map, you're going to get into a public hearing process and it's a lot more complicated. We aren't really amending the map because we aren't changing any districts.
Skip, you brought up this, we're talking about this one piece of property. But we're talking about all of our one. We're not just talking about one property when we do this amendment.
But 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 somebody can't just, somebody can't just jump in and make that change. They've got to come back to planning commission and say, I've got a house sitting here and I want to make it an office space.
I agree.
Commission says, you've got no parking, you've got no facilities to do that. No, we want to approve it.
I got a front yard and I can bulldoze the topsoil off and have a parking lot.
Well, not without, not without the city, city approval.
I know, but you're you're talking, you've got no parking, but you can make parking.
Yeah, but you don't have it there. It's not sitting there ready to go and city's got to approve that. City's not going to approve that. Not in the residential area. They're not going to give you a conditional use of permit.
This group of people here may not approve it, but the next ones down the road might. Sure, do whatever you want to do. Well, we're, 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 we're at this discussion because of, probably because of that.
Well, if you, if you want to take, if you want to take that approach, then down the road somewhere, somebody can do anything they want to do. You can't stop it. They can change all our ones to our twos or our sevens or our twenty sixes or C twos, you know, anything they want to do.
I'm, I'm just saying it covers all the R one.
But they still have Every R one district and it adds, you know, it it doesn't. Uh, exactly. Let me see if I can explain my thoughts on this. And it gets into the thoughts behind zoning. So sorry if I get too deep, but basically a zoning code has a lot of provisions. Planning commission and council governmental bodies in general have to make interpretations. Not only do proposed uses have to meet specific requirements, but they've got to meet those general requirements of the condition and character. So every time somebody proposes a use of property beyond maybe building a house, you're going to have a business that has to actually fit. You're going to have a use that actually has to fit. Adding an amendment to the code that is being proposed, and if you agree to it, you'd make a recommendation back back to council would do one thing. Under the conditional uses in an R one district, you would be adding general office to medical office. It does not mean that you would specifically be giving permission to any one, two, three, four, or five properties. Now, would it permit this property on Springfield Road to be a law office under the code? Yes, because that would be opening a medic, a spot that's been allowed to be a medical office. And it's now going to allow it to be a general office, which would include a law office. But any other proposed, any other owner that comes before planning commission with the idea of turning their house into an office has to meet all of the same requirements. The unique thing about, to me about this specific property is it's already got the parking lot because at some point in time, the village of Columbia allowed a medical office to be built. And Ted, when it was built, I'm not sure that the conditional uses says were quite the same. I don't know because I don't have the code from nineteen eighty and I have no idea what it said. I'd like to see it. I don't have it anymore.
I I guess, Mark, in reference to that, everything I see when in the, you know, the American League of Publishing shows that all of the zoning ordinances were the ones that were passed in nineteen seventy four, all the ones we're talking about. So they're all the original ordinances. Um, and and I think it's an odd additional, or it's an odd conditional use, but it was there from the beginning. So that was the intention from the beginning.
Okay, so there's been a motion made.
Mark, I listened to you real, oh, I'm sorry. I listen to you carefully. If we pass this, as you just said, it, does it go back to council?
Yes.
For adoption?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there's a motion made. There's been a motion been made to do that. Bryce made the motion.
Motion made, I'm going to second. I will second Tucker's move, motion. To send it back.
Bryce's motion. Bryce's motion. Second. Bryce made the motion to send it back to council.
Then I will second that.
Dan, if you would please. You're muted, Dan.
You're muted. Thank you.
You're muted, Dan.
Yeah, it is my turn. You're right. Thank you. Um, Bryce?
Yes, sir. I could read your lips the first time.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yeah, yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
So the motion sent back to council would be to add offices to conditional uses. All right, that takes care of all of the business we have taken care of. Any commission comments?
If I could take one second, I just want to say thank you very much to council uh, for their support in the meeting last week and the appointment to planning commission. It's truly an honor to serve on this commission. I look forward to working with each and every one of you um, in our quest to serve the residents of our great city. So thank you so much. I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
And uh, any public comments? I know Rob, you had wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was um, interested to see if uh, who'd be in and out of town here and there's a lot of stuff going on with Lakefront and different things the next couple of weeks. Does anybody have a site map of what's happened over there, Mr. Flynn's property that they could share?
I couldn't hear you, Rob.
You have a, you have a you, you have a site map of Mr. Flynn's property?
Mine's prehistoric, Rob. It's on paper.
Yeah, I just, um, I I own the property, um, that's on the point across from Jameson Trace.
Right.
And some of the plans beforehand, I've I've kind of said, sent a representative, uh, um, my right hand man down to the uh, uh, meetings. But our property, uh, we believe it's a great piece of property. However, um, it's extremely low. And it's, there's commercial all around us except for one house that's still on septic, which the septic goes actually on our property. Um, so um, there's a a vault placed and then there's Flynn's, which I actually originally owned from Mr. Corey. I was the owner between. I sold it. I saw, no, I sold it to Mr. Nihaz and then he sold it to Mr. Flynn. Um, but um, uh, our property zone are three. And there's a a house between my property and the substation or actually between uh, 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 is that a monument place or um, uh, he makes um?
Yeah, the vault.
Vaults. So you know, our property is essentially kind of useless because nobody wants to live up against uh, up against um, between two roads. Um, being zoned R three.
Hey guys, I have the the Google Earth up. If you want me to show that.
That'd be great.
If that helps you any, Rob.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. So, so there's um, Mr. Flynn's properties that right there at the substation behind it, okay? And the the vault place is is right there and and I saw, uh, is it, uh, Robert Mc Murray, I think was on the call earlier too. He's even beyond that. So we own the property there. You could see, uh, we've been brush hogging right there. It should look a little nicer by now. Um, but that property is very, very low. And so, um, I'm just, just bringing it up, okay? Just, just because I want to just talk about it for a split second. Um, um, I think the whole point needs to be thought about. Uh, number one for zoning, uh, number two, just for the sheer, um, you know, uh, I don't know, conversation of, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to to continue Sabre Boulevard straight out to fourteen. I don't know if it makes sense to uh, um, to keep it the way it is right now. But um, um, you know, where, where we were talking about bringing the sanitary sewer, I mean, it's a very, very, very difficult grade, uh, number one. But number two is, um, I I just don't think, you know, sanitary sewer from a residential standpoint's you know, that useful to this R three property. And you guys were just talking about, you know, something that applied to R one. You know, this is a, this is a piece of property that, you know, for conditional zoning, we could put medical and stuff like that. But this, this property is designed, you know, this is designed for something other than, you know, medical, I would, I would think. Um, and if you go there, you know, and you were to build uh duplexes or threeplexes because it's R three. I mean, the traffic's basically above your, above your head. You're going to see it staring, you know, laying in bed, looking up, looking at your traffic. So, um, I don't know. I I I, I was interested in seeing Mr. Flynn's site plan to see if, number one, if if it was big enough of an addition, um, that, you know, that it would have other mechanisms for financing with whether, whether it's a TIF or if it's, you know, um, because the mechanism before for financing the the sanitary sewer, I don't remember, but it was, I think it was added on to the property owner's tax bills on a linear footage basis and then on a, on a, um, per acre basis after that. So, um, is that the plan, Lance, right now still?
So, you know, we have not talked about it since we met last and I believe Adam was representative at that time. And that would be the same, um, you know, I I'm guessing the same when we meet next, that will be this, the same, um, you know, theory uh, on on installing sewer as it, as it was when we talked about the last time.
Is his building big enough to, is he making major improvements to it or are they all interior?
Potential addition. Uh, if I, if I understand the drawing right.
It's not real big additions, Rob. I mean, there's sixty by sixty, maybe two of them.
I thought two fifty by eighties, I thought.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, each building was a fifty by eighty addition.
On the back of the building or is it on the Sabre side?
On the back.
On the back there between the the substation and the
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to the, to the south.
Yeah, I mean, I I think getting sewer down fourteen is Yeah, I mean, I I think getting sewer down fourteen is imperative for the city, you know. You know, for for proper growth. You know, I just don't know how to do it and. You know, and I agree with Tucker's comment about the fencing. I think, you know, I think anything you could do to to. When when people are on fourteen cutting through town, they just want a good presentation for the city, you know what I mean? So anything you could do to to to. Permit him to have higher, I I think it is six foot, the highest fencing you're allowed in the city. I don't know what we need to do, but that's something that I would. Think that in in that particular instance, you know, twelve foot would be great. So. You know, from a legality standpoint, but but you basically have C four with him, C four with the monument place. And then there's a strip of land that's this guy in the red house here and his septic field is actually pushing on. On the 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 that tree line right there. He was complaining about trees hitting his barn, so I took all those trees down. But those trees were on my property there. So he he was bothering us about branches hitting, so we took those down and then. And again, I just don't know. I don't know what to. I don't know, this this property R three would. What you guys are talking about setting the council, you know, I mean, does that give you kind of a lateral language? I don't have the whole ordinance or didn't read the whole ordinance, but does it give you the lateral language for all residential or just R one?
Just R one.
That would be added to R one. And and I don't have the book in front of me. I just have all I the stuff that was pertinent for tonight.
R one, is that include R one P U D or just R one?
R one.
On the table is R one.
Right, was was just R one, not R one P U D, not anything else. I mean, what they did, Rob, was they looked at the R one. Conditional uses that were allowed and include medical office. So what they were discussing was the idea of, well, what would be. I I don't know if I want to say what would be the harm. I'm not going to take any council person's words, but. They discussed the idea of adding general office to an R one conditional use.
Okay, that's it.
Not anywhere but not in, you know, not a P U D, not R two, just R one.
All right, that's that's very simple. I thought it was more into into giving, allowing us to input. Any use into. The conversation of of this, I've been hitting and missing it, but over the past few conversations. So many terminology, you know, so much terminology has been used, you know, we can do this, we can do that. You know, from the initial meeting, I mean, I I like, you know, I I think the zoning, I personally like zoning because it's it's very definitive when you buy and sell property next to other property. I I I'm a fan of zoning, but I just think that this particular property, when you guys do drive around town. I would just, I guess, just encourage you to look at this whole corner. You know, we have. I I feel that from the bridge to pass the 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 substation. This whole area here needs a site plan basically and we need to improve the view of, you know, from Firestone. And what's happening at Sparkle, you know, bringing those two together, you know, just improving the whole, the whole corridor of fourteen. So, you know, I I don't think you can. Do it properly with, again, this red house and my property, you know, building a residential community right there on that point. Property all around us, we got a, we got a substation on one side of us, another substation the other side of us, get a monument place next to us. I was told you can't spot zone, but I I don't think that, you know, I think this property is going to sit idle. And I will be, you know, without the the thought of rezoning this sewer does sewer doesn't do that much good.
So I. Rezone it to what, Rob?
I I don't know. I just think this is a commercial piece. I think this is a, you know, a a commercial piece and putting the proper buffers up against Jamestown Trace. To protect those residences there. I mean, I I haven't looked at it in 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 too much depth, but.
That that's slowly turning into some sort of a commercial corridor. I mean, not that it's any spot zone. But back when it was all zones so many years ago, we didn't know, no one knew how it was going to develop. But it seemed like it's slowly converting into a commercial corridor along.
And and that's what I'm asking for. I'm I'm asking for advice from planning commission that when we plan this out, you know, we we look at this as. You know, whether it's C two, C three, C four, you know, I everybody goes for C four. But then you have other limitations in C four. You have height restrictions, you have other limitations. So. I don't necessarily know that, you know, going for C four is the answer. I'm just saying that this air whole area. You know, it's wise to kind of try to plan it out and and decide, you know, you know, even. Even the traffic pattern, I mean, like I said, I mean, it makes, it may make sense to have a road from Sabre go straight out. And, you know, and eliminate the the overpass there. You know, where you're coming out, where you're going up that big hill to fourteen. So I don't know, I'm just, you know. Back when this was put in, I don't know, the fifties, probably late fifties. You know, it 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 would be nice when, I explained to Lance, it would be nice when. The state comes along and and repairs that bridge or or teams up with the city to repair that bridge and city limits. You know, we get a walkway to get from Sabre of Jamestown, this side of town, this point. Over the, you know, fourteen to to get to the to the park and get to the city sidewalks. So that's something that I, you know, that I I I know it's explained at the land, but just. I don't know, just continue to have vision for this side. I don't have any plans with it right now. I I'm not going to sell it because I'm trying to protect Jamestown and Sabre right now. But I don't have any plans. I just think that it's, you know, just may make sense to to look at this whole area here. And, you know, when you and when we. I think Mark said this a number of times, but when you change zoning or when you do something, it doesn't, you know. It doesn't take your approvals away from you. I think the site reviews and the detention ponds and storm waters are, you know, very important, but. You could change the zoning on on this corridor and say, you know, we're going to do this, but we're going to do a a no build area. You know, fifty feet from Jamestown Trace or, you know what I mean? You could, you could address something, yeah, I think in the approval. So. But I don't know, just, you know, look at the whole point though, when you guys can, just because we come back and talk about sewer and stuff. I think it's 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 important to to, you know, for us to bounce ideas off each other. That's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I I dragged the meeting on. I know it was long, but.
That's okay. That's okay. Good to hear an opinion. Guess it's something to work, think about.
Yeah, so, um, all right. Well, thank you for your approvals tonight too as well.
So you've got everything used up on at Arrowhead. We're, you know, we're going to miss you.
It's not over yet. You can't get rid of me.
I was gonna say, he's not quite done.
No, bothering bothering Mark, bothering Lance, so too too young, so but. Now, Arrowhead, one thing we haven't done though. I don't think in the city limits yet is close the door on a project. And I and we've done that in Canfield and Boardman and different places growing up and it's nice finishing something. So I'm I'm ecstatic about like the next two or three years finishing back Bay just to be able to have finished pavement and have a project done. So.
Sounds good. Is there any other public comment? I guess somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Geez, nobody wants to make the motion.
Don't move.
I'll second that.
Meeting returned.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Night, everyone.